We will call this group board of St. Lucie County Special Work Order Session Meeting to order March 27, 2018. And we call it to order. We welcome everyone that's here today. And we will turn this section over to our superintendent and manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Board members. We'll have a busy morning this morning. We're going to start out with an overview as we do at every work session of the Architec in progress on our new building. After that, we will have a summary of the legislation from Vern and Nicole and Natalie. After that, I'll make a presentation regarding school safety, the new legislation. That'll be embedded kind of in Vern's presentation, but then I'm going to take it and then we'll personalize it as how it affects our school district with SROs in our schools, as well as the mental health component and the board and overview of that. And then do some Q and A with the board to make sure that everybody's on the same page with me on that. So I'll ask Marty and Tony and whoever else you need to come on up.
Good morning. Marty Sanders. Wanted to give you a quick update. Been a month since Architec was here. And we're still proceeding smoothly, on schedule. And I'll let Tony give the presentation.
Thanks. Tony, Dan, I appreciate it.
Good morning, Superintendent Madam Chair and Board members. Thank you. Just wanted to give you an update on the administration project. Basically, what we want to talk about today is site plan, the building floor plans, the boardroom, and then bringing up to date on the design and the construction scheduling. This is the current site plan that we have that we're working on in the civil construction documents. This has been presented or submitted to the county on March 14 for their review and comments. And we've also met informally with Coulter to discuss not only the site, but the construction activity on Brandywine and the construction schedule. Basically, around the building, we have a Brandywine with three ingress and egress entrances to parking. The center one will be a deck of roundabout, deck of concrete with the drop off leading into the main lobby. Visitor parking on the west side, and then on the north and south sides would be staff parking. Around the backside is a service drive that will allow us into secure parking and also to the loading area. And the site itself, we have preserved around the perimeter of the site, so we're trying to keep it buffered as much as possible. We've also allowed for grass parking, which if there is a time when there's training and during the workday, it gives us some overflow parking for the site. First floor plan, basic design of the building, the lobby and the center. We have two wings on either side that are the departmental wings. In this case, on the first floor to the right, we have testing, publication, maintenance in the mill room and the chiller yard to the far right. On the left, we'll have human resources, security records, and adult education and student assignment. And then the boardroom to the bottom. Now, the boardroom has been designed to allow us to multiple training areas. There's at least three or four different training scenarios where we can add the boardroom, a large and a small training room, or three medium training rooms or four individual training rooms. So it's very flexible and allows for multi-use. On the second floor, again, we have the main lobby to the right, food service ESC. The student services to the left will be the computer lab and ITS. To the bottom, again, the board area building will be enhanced. That'll be our enhanced structure, so we have the IT NOC center there, plus the mechanic room that'll service the boardroom in that particular wing in the building. That'll all be on a emergency generator and its own separate air conditioning system. And then on the third floor, to the right, top right, we have teaching and learning. To the top left, business services, media, and legal. And then over the boardroom into the enhanced area, we'll have the superintendent suite, the board members' offices, media studio, communications. This is just a blow up of the boardroom. On the top, you can see the entrance doors coming into the facility. The dotted lines are the areas that we can divide up into different training areas. The smallest is a 30 by 30, the largest or the medium size is a 60 by 90, and then we have a 60 by 60 and a 30, excuse me, 30 by 60. So there's different opportunities to use it. And also, we talked about at time with student assignments, it can also be used for overflow since they're both off the lobby.
Tony, what's the ceiling height of that?
We're looking somewhere around maybe 18 feet plus or minus. Schedule wise, currently, we can, the civil site plan is in progress, and we've submitted to the county for the concept site plan. We're working towards our Phase One big package, which will be clearing the site work for around April 1st. And then the next phase will be the foundation package for May 12th, and then construction document package June 12th. If that's open up for any questions or comments.
Do we have any questions or any comments?
What's on the boardroom building? What's the total height of the elevation to the top?
Including the superintendent suite there? That'll be probably about 40, 45 feet roughly.
Thank you very much for your time. Anything you want to add, Marty?
He did mention the boardroom and the superintendent suite as a enhanced area. He's talking about hurricane-enhanced area that is designed to a higher wind load so that we can actually have some emergency operations center for the school district as well.
Okay. I'd like to bring up Mr. Crawford, Natalie, and Nicole. Come on up, and they're going to do a presentation for us. The session just ended, and I appreciate Vern getting up here from Palm Beach. I guess you got stuck in traffic.
I was on my way, I was talking about moving up to the Fort St. Lucie area for the past couple of years, and this morning has convinced me it's time.
You've had that conversation for 10 years.
Yeah, well, it's really getting time, let me tell you. Good morning. I, let's see.
Do you have a number for your phone?
Well, we welcome you, Vern, when you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We come to you this morning as a team, and I've been very pleased in working with Nicole and with Natalie during our current session. It's been nice to basically sit back and do nothing and let them do the work, which has worked out quite well for me. But we had, as you know, a very interesting session. This is my 31st. Having completed goes back to some of our prehistoric times. And they're never alike. There's never any two that are similar. This year certainly has its own personality as we go through it. We were sort of going along very quietly, slowly, obviously, up until the apartment shootings, and that totally changed the complexion of the session as we dealt with it. So, are we up?
No.
Do we need a bump up? Is it on?
We don't have a bump up, so.
Thanks.
You do have a bump up.
Pardon me a moment for a technical.
Okay.
How is everybody doing this morning? Yes, you know what? I would like to introduce all of you because some of you have not met her, but this is Natalie Cato.
Good morning.
With Lewis Almond and Walker. And Natalie, if you could just give them a breakdown of your background and what your specialty is.
Absolutely, absolutely. Pay no attention to this man behind the curtain.
There is no comparison.
Good morning. I'm Natalie Cato with Lewis Almond and Walker. We are a statewide law firm, and I'm a member of our government affairs practice. We all were brought on the team because we have represented St. Lucie County in the state legislature for a number of years now.
How long have you been with us?
Over 20 years. And so this year, when you all approached Nicole about maybe expanding your team a little bit, she asked us if we'd like to take the contract, and we gladly accepted. I started my time in legislature as an attorney in the Senate Minority Office. I was there for the parent trigger fight in 2012. And then I went out and I became, yeah, right. I then became a contract office. And this is my first time representing a school board, but under Vern's excellent and studious tutelage, I've learned a lot this year. Nicole has been wonderful, and I actually really can't think of a better school board to start with because whenever I talk to Nicole, she's like, "Yeah, yeah, you know, we don't have these problems over here." And I'm like, "That's great." So, yeah, so it's, thank you for having me, and I really look forward to working with you now and in the future.
And with that, are there any questions?
Really quick summary. The number of bills, so the tracking that we did is just about average from previous years. We did extend for two days while they finished off the appropriations legislation. And we've got roughly about 41 bills that passed that go indirectly or indirectly affect the county. I'd like to do just a quick thing as far as what did not pass. And we're really going to focus on the FAF V, if you will, in terms of the major ones that went through. But what did not go through was there's a lot of discussion about still increasing the penalty for texting while driving to a category one offense, and that did not pass. Obviously, there was nothing dealing with weapons on campuses or colleges, the so-called pack and carry on campus. Mandatory half-credit for financial literacy. There was a real flurry at the end to get that through. It did not pass. The House did not want to add a half-credit mandate. There were restrictions on referendum dates that did not happen. There was legislation to further define and regulate the requirements on student seclusion and restraint. That did not occur. Reading requirements, that was Gail Harrell's reading bill. Part of that did go through, but the basic legislation itself did not. There was 5203. At one point, this was one that was going to require every, I should say, the reporting of overnight travel of every employee and officer of every agency on a monthly basis. That did not pass. Term limits, the legislation did not pass. I'll talk about CRC, Constitution Vision Commission later on. There was an effort to try to expand the gaming compact, the seminal compact. That did not occur either. And there was a bill to further refine the state adoption process for instructional materials, and that did not occur as well. Couple of the FAF V bills that did happen. Senate Bill 4, this is higher education, and this is only universities. The community colleges were not affected in the legislation at the state level. Again, there is a CRC for Bolso that would affect them, but it restores pretty much the full values of right future scholarships, and it also talks about setting some of the different metrics now for the state university system. House Bill 459, or 495, was actually the bill in wait. The House had this poised to go if the Senate defeated 7055, because there was a question as to whether at the end 7055 was going to pass. This was set to go where they were going to be amending on some of the things that they wanted and shoot this one over. But in the end, it was a mini train, if you will, maybe a four-car train. It does allow that if somebody is in drop in their fifth year, that they can extend the actual drop to the end of the school year. There are penalties in there. There's a lot of language relative to assault or inappropriate educative behavior. This pertains to the Educational Practices Commission, and we'll be seeing some work coming down from DOE on that. Their legislation has started initially with computer coding. You may remember a couple of years ago, that was going to allow computer coding as a substitute for a foreign language, morphed into computer science curriculum and teacher training. There are bonuses for those teachers. There's a concern legislatively that there are not enough people going into computer science based upon the jobs that are needed. There's, I won't say confusing, but I know that Ms. Wild is going to have fun with this one. The end of course credit for comparable passage of international bachelor AP and ACE courses in lieu of having to take the end of course exam. Sounds good. Problem with statistics, getting results back and determining thing, and I'm quite sure that we'll have some time talking about that one.
We have all ears.
Good. And the, this is like a case where this bill originally was a single paragraph bill that dealt with calling for a cost study on the district cost differential. That was actually amended out of the bill, so the original bill is nowhere near what happened. They did pass the DCD though, as provides a language in appropriations bill. We have another mini train Senate Bill, actually, it should be House Bill 731, in terms of prohibiting the superintendent or the district from collecting what they felt was unnecessary information for home education students. It allows them to register period. The state funding for dual enrollment and for instructional material for home ed is being provided for at the state level. It does get into attendance requirements, and the key thing, one of the things is changing the name of the ACT, preliminary ACT to the pre-ACT. House Bill 1013, don't move your breath, but there is a congressional request now that asks for Congress to exempt Florida from federal laws so that we could have daylight savings time year-round. That started initially because there was a legislator who was tired of going home at nighttime in the dark and wanted to always have some light, and then it became a tourism creation.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but that was so sad. They got it totally upside down, and the conversation was just surreal.
Things don't happen for good policy often, is that a quote? House Bill 1279, I'm going to ask you, I'm a special with staff, keep your eye on this. This is a significant bill in terms of increasing audit requirements, and it doesn't affect us right now, but it does others, which is to require the district to have an auditor. We were able to get this bill delayed a year, ostensibly because of the fact that with everything going on with school safety, trying to implement this at the same time would be just too much. And the legislature agreed to that. It would be my hope and recommendation that next year we could come back and amend it and make it a little more sensible. You already have got requirements for auditing and financial reporting in Chapter 1015. There's no need to really, or 1010, I'm sorry. There's no need to really have this as an additional layer. In this bill, it really was aimed at one county, not here on the east coast.
One thing, 1279 includes travel language, which is if you're a travel, it's $500, you have to bring a 2000 or an 1000.
And that's for officers.
Yes.
So.
Of the officers, not employees, of the officers.
So no spontaneous going to Tallahassee. That's supposed to be funny. Senate Bill 1392 is, they stuck in the language on civil citation. That had been a standalone bill for some time and had not gone anywhere. What it simply says that each judicial circuit must provide for some sort of a free arrest program, whether it's civil citation or some other program in place. It focuses on adults, but it also does go into juveniles and their different categories for which citation would be issued, or that a student or juvenile would be referred to in another program like youth court or whatever else from up here. 155552, I put in there mainly, it's a reason for us, it's going to be reporting information back and forth with juvenile justice on handling offenders. And the tax package, which the governor happily signed last week, does provide for a three-day tax holiday for school supplies. It amends the language to allow if you have a referendum such as infrastructure or others, you can now use those dollars to purchase assistive devices like whiteboards. DOE determined you couldn't do it, so that was put in there so that they can. If a district plans to do an infrastructure sales tax referendum now, it requires that an audit must be conducted by a TOGA for financial solvency or performance at least 60 days prior to that point. And then for capital outlay property casualty insurance, it increases the cap from 50 to 100 to 150 dollars that the district can use. They will go 1.5 mil by the, to pay for property insurance. All right. At this point, I'm going to shift over to Nicole, who will give you all the wonderful good stuff on 7055.
Yes, 7055. I will say, similar to 7069, this was a big bill for the legislature. 274-page bill, all on prepaid through 12 education, contains at least, at least 28 separate bills, some budget and some not. First and foremost, it creates the HOPE Scholarship. And the HOPE Scholarship, as you guys have been referenced to, is House Bill 1, so any bullied, assaulted students, and if the parent feels is not satisfied with the school's response to the bully, to their bully child, can go to the HOPE Scholarship. The HOPE Scholarship is to where, when someone goes to buy a car or a truck or anything, they can often to donate 105 dollars of their sales tax to the scholarship. So that's how this scholarship is going to be funded. It also creates reading scholarship accounts similar to Gardner for students at level one or two. Provides uniform assessment, fiscal criteria, and monitoring for HOPE, reading, Gardner, and tax credit scholarships. So there's that one on that one.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
If that funding, because I don't know if it would just offer 105 dollars or 100 dollars, I guess there are people who would for this. Are we going to have to make up the difference?
No.
No, 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 no. This does not come out, that's one thing about the HOPE Scholarship, is that it does not come out of your funding. So it's strictly sales tax dollars that is going to be funding the trust fund. Now, as to further down the road, I can't predict that one.
This is going to be an interesting piece of legislation because all of the other scholarship programs, well, the main ones, such as supportive tax credit, are not using sales tax. This does use sales tax. And the question has already arisen that when I, as a car buyer, am at the dealer, and the dealer will have a little form now that says, "Do you wish to contribute any of your money?" And I sign that little form. When I sign that little form, does that then become sales tax collection and therefore state revenue? And I'm not an attorney, but that question is going to come up at some point on this bill.
Yep. It expands the principal autonomy pilot program, which was down in South Florida. It allows for, it expands it to statewide option, that you can now do the principal autonomy program, allows for supervision of more than one school under an independent governance board appointed by the school board. So the school board has to agree to do the independent governing board. Reinstates district flexibility for Title I expenditures but limit to 1 percent, increases your indirect cost from eight to 10 percent. It also, this is, this is key here, provides the carryforward funds, the carryforward funds are not subject to that section. So if you have any carryforward funds from Title I, it's not restricted to the 1 percent. Increases charter school latitude and consolidation. So now they have increased it, so two to three years for deferred opening, five to six years for contract and planning, appeals on termination, and any non-renewal discretion will have to be going through the DOA process, which is with an admin judge, and his ruling is final, his or her ruling is final. Moving on to another section, 145 million dollars of state fund is provided to charter schools for capital outlay. It holds the district heartless from contribution for the fiscal year 19, requires contribution for fiscal year 20 forward if state level is not adjusted. Expands the flexibility on your capital outlay so that if there are shelter space available, if you have shelter space already available, that you are able to not, you can build going forward without using the SREP flex. Restores use of funds without needing a facilities survey. As you know, you guys received a letter, so this is, this is just putting in the statute that you can use those six items for your capital outlay. So you have your private gifts and donations, your impact fees, your voted tax, your voted sales tax. So it's like those six sections are now put in the statute for you. Those six items are put in the statute. Allows extra hour of intensive reading instruction within the school day. Removes all four students from instruction and determines schools for low-performing reading environment on a three-year average of assessment data. So we just have to see how that works out because that's, you don't do that right now, so we need to see how well this is going to work out going forward. But equal access for home education students to dual enrollment, and the students only have to meet the GPA of the required head, higher ed institution. So let's say that any of our state college says, "Well, all they need is a 2.5 GPA," they can now do dual enrollment.
In case you're wondering what the little asterisks are for.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just want to let you know that, you know, St. Lucie is part of the Treasure Coast Group with Martin and with Shelby County, and that those asterisks indicate those were issues that were coinciding with their priorities, which were also our priorities.
Next up, collective bargaining requires teacher unions by 2019, 20 to certify a member at least 50 percent of the population and must re, or must reapply for certification. So if they do not meet 50 percent, they have to reapply. Best and brightest recipients. This offers best and brightest recipients to those that are no longer employed in the district. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but still employed in the district, but not necessarily a teacher anymore. So let's say that they were a teacher previous fiscal year, and they were, they were eligible for best and brightest, but now moved on to personnel, they can still be part of that best and brightest. Charter homeschool and virtual school students may register intent for sports before participating, not at start of the season of the activity. District must conspicuously display the state motto, "In God We Trust," in all schools and district buildings. And I think that's the end of the presentation.
We had always, every time I.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
I grew up in God We Trust, and then all of us pay cash, so. All right. Natalie's going to run you through 7026, which the governor has also signed. And one question, which I noticed, my, can we talk about it upfront? And that is, there's a separate pot of money set aside for sheriffs to conduct training as part of the budget program. Question has come in, will school districts be able to get, tap into that to help cover costs of resource officers? We tried three times on the floor in the Senate to amend it, did not get it. Afterwards, however, you've got Senate President Joan Baggron, you've got the incoming Speaker of the House, Jose Oliva, and the Governor, who have basically all said, "We will take a look at this." There's a thing called the Legislative Budget Commission, which is a tribe, it's a commission, actually, it's a tri-group, but it's mainly, I mean, the House, the Senate, and the Senate Union. They meet, and they do have the authority to make budget amendments. And as of last week, the impression that we are under is that they're very interested and willing to make some adjustments so that districts can tap into that. They do want to see what the feedback is from districts before doing so, because there have been some that have indicated an interest in participating. But I think that probably around May, plus or minus three months, somewhere around May, June, we could very well see an LBC meeting to do that. And that's been the question I've been hit with the most in the last couple of weeks. I just wanted to get that one up front.
Thanks, Vern. So as you can see, these are the kind of broad brushstrokes in terms of the appropriations. The one thing that I think is important to note here is from that 98 million to implement a grant program, Senator Garcia from Miami did put an amendment on the Senate floor successfully that would exclude securing entries, checkpoints, security cameras, fencing, and bulletproof glass from the, from the student capital outlay funding. And that was, that was a big deal, and that was an important, kind of, that was an important tweak in the bill because that means that this money's going to be used directly for school funding, but isn't going to count against the capital outlay for students, which was, that was a huge win and something that we should all be celebrating.
He did that on the floor, by the way, so.
Yeah. And I will say too, you know, there's these broad brushstrokes for money, and then there's a couple other smaller programs that I'm going to address briefly, and some of those have trust funds attached, some of those don't. It still remains to be seen how some of these smaller programs are going to come into play. The other thing that I'm going to talk about that goes to the LBC is there was a letter that was sent to the superintendent, the school board members from Governor Scott. We have some extra copies that anybody needs one, but I think that that's going to give us some better insight as well. So one of the very first things the bill does is it does create a. So one of the very first things the bill does is, it does create a, grants to fund student crime watch programs. And these programs are, these would be funded out of the School Crime Stoppers Trust Fund. A couple of things to know about these programs, these would be.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. You know, the, the biggest thing additionally about this is that these programs must allow students and community to anonymously relay information concerning unsafe practices. That was one of the biggest things that came out of the request from the Stoneman Douglas Students, is the ability to anonymously communicate concerns about threats. And so if you read through 7026, there's a number of places where students and community members would be able to communicate concerns about students anonymously. There's a appropriation to create, basically an app, where students can anonymously disclose their concerns. Law enforcement has the ability to review social media when they're, for students when they're looking at threats. I will say, as somewhat of a privacy person myself, I think that we could see some concerns later on with some of that, some of those issues, but for right now, the, the draft of the bill really wanted to make sure that they were responsive to the concern of the students and what the students had seen as being some of the problems. So just a couple other quick things. The bill creates some really significant mental health assistance and counseling programs for students. It authorizes law enforcement officers to take and hold a firearm by a person undergoing a Baker Act. The one thing I will say about this Baker Act language that's a little unclear is what happens if somebody in the home is Baker acted, but somebody else in the home owns firearms. So that's another place where I think that there, that's not necessarily a concern for you all, but just kind of a general policy issue, something to be thinking about. There is this risk protection order language, this is something that was covered extensively in the media, and then a three-day waiting period for all firearms until background checks are completed. That provision, the raising the age of 21 and the sale of bump stocks are all currently being challenged in both state and federal court by various gun rush groups. The, the bill establishes the Marjory Stoneman Douglas, I can't talk this morning, I'm so sorry, Public Safety Commission, and this is specifically to investigate system failures in the Parkland school shooting. I think, you know, the makeup of this program, there's a lot of discussion about putting some of the parents and some of the students on this commission. It's going to be interesting to see, I think, what comes out of that. And then we're going to get to the Guardian program. I know that this is something that everybody's been watching very closely. I have to say that we were very lucky in that I represent both the county and the school board, so that when we were dealing with the Guardian program this year, I was able, we were able to kind of ask questions about, okay, so who exactly is paying for this? You know, is, is it going to be the county and the sheriff's office, is it going to be the school board? What's important about this program is that the sheriff is allowed to establish a Guardian program, and the sheriff is allowed to establish the Guardian program whether the school board opts in or not. However, whether the school board actually opts into the program, that is a separate and distinct action the school board needs to take. So you basically are going to be checking two boxes if you want to opt into this program. The school guardians must complete 132 hours of comprehensive firearm safety proficiency training. My understanding, and I did confirm this with the good sheriff this morning, is that that is, the overall training is actually more extensive than a graduate of the law enforcement academy would have. So these are people who will be very highly trained before they're allowed to carry a gun on campus. The people who are eligible to participate in this program, if you are strictly a teacher, you are not allowed. However, the exception there is if you are an active duty service member, so if somebody who's in the National Guard, and as a teacher, could apply to be a member of the Guardian program. If you were a JROTC instructor and you're a teacher, then you would be allowed to be a member of the Guardian program, and if you were a retired law enforcement. So those are the exceptions to the, kind of the blanket prohibition on classroom instruction personnel participating in the program.
The definition that they use in this thing is, you've got in Chapter 21202, is a series of things on instructional personnel. O2A is one, says regular classroom teaching, and that's where we deal with the best and brightest and so on. The amendment that was put on to the bill says exclusively teaching classes. So that you, if you can be a teacher, and this is where they bring in, for example, the coach or somebody else, if that individual is not exclusively teaching, but also has other duties, they would be eligible for the program. But the program, on the surface of it, does exclude classroom teachers who are exclusively teaching as their daily schedule.
So then each school district is, must designate a school safety specialist, and create a threat assessment team at each school, and then the team must operate under the district school safety specialist direction. In the letter from Governor Scott, there's a timeline in terms of how some of these kind of, some of these provisions are going to be rolled out in the bill. And the Office of Safe Schools is going to be created by the Department of Education no later than May 1st. The, the specialists for each school district must be designated by July 1st. And by July 1st, the governor expects that the school board and the sheriff will meet and get a feel for how many personnel want to participate in the guardianship program. And this will become important a little bit later, as we look at the number of school resource officers and things like that. This next provision prohibiting a person from making, posting, or transmitting a threat to conduct a mass shooting or act of terrorism, this is actually an interesting provision. It's been, there's been a push from state attorney's offices for the last few years to expand the written or verbal threats language to include like threats made online. This was something that they've been working to kind of push back against for the past few years, just because nobody wants to see a kid get mad on Facebook, threaten to punch their best friend, and then get charged with a felony. However, in light of what happened at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, this language was expanded to include any threat of mass shooting or an act of terrorism, and it is making, posting, or transmitting a threat in any way, shape, or form. And again, that is a second degree felony now under this bill. DCF has a contract for community action teams who provide behavioral health services. FDLE, this is the mobile app I was talking about that allows the students to anonymously disclose threats. And then we're back to appropriations. Just real quick, a couple other things on the timeline to be aware of. So September 1st is by, the point by which the school should establish a threat assessment team, but there's a, and then August 1st is the date that each school must complete a security risk assessment. But there's a couple other nebulous dates in terms of things that must happen before the 2018, 2019 school year. And that includes Department of Education identifying a security consulting firm to conduct the independent third-party review of the state schools assessment, as well as, I'm not sure I have the other one right. The Department of Education establishing a mental health awareness and assistance training program to train school personnel to better identify kinds of mental illness.
The governor's letter, from my viewpoint, clarifies very distinctly concern that has been raised since this thing passed, was that the bill takes effect upon becoming a law. Well, the governor signed it the middle of the month, and then as soon as he signs it, it becomes law. Appropriations, however, does not take effect until July 1, because appropriations, he said in the, in the budget, we'll talk about it here in a second. And the question came up is, are districts then supposed to implement this thing effective the day after the governor signs the law? And if so, how do they do so if they don't have the financial resources available to them until July 1? So the governor's letter clarifies that and does set for the timeframe. We had, all three of us have been queried about, well, we're supposed to do this now. Matter of fact, I think there's one organization, charter group, that already is saying, you're supposed to do this now. And we had not, we had not heard anyone in session from any source saying that we had to implement this thing as Srinath outlined immediately, that there would be a phase in, but the expectations would take effect in the 18, 19 school year. So the governor's letter does go toward that, which obviously does not preclude counties from going ahead and making arrangements of what are major of the school year and number of the mark. Appropriations, this will be very simple, because it was a simple bill. We increased total funding by 800, by 484 million dollars. 384 of that is in categorical funding, predominantly in the state schools area. The VSA actually went up for 47 cents per FTE. Don't spend it all in one place. The, for a while, actually, the Senate had, even in their last offer, they were still down $5 from current year. But there's roughly $100 million that is in the VSA. That $100 million is going to be taken up roughly by 54 million, that is for Florida Retirement System, approximately another 29, 30 million, that is for adjusted growth. So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room. The paid student allocation obviously is the money that runs the classroom. I think the superintendent may want to have some comments on that afterwards, but we've had several years where the governor had recommended an average 3% increase, which the legislators chose to not quite hit that particular mark. Safe schools has got three allocations. They increased the minimum per district that had been at 50,000, now it's 250,000. That is for the $64 million current level of funding. The remainder of that, after you do the 250 per district, which is times 67, the remainder is based upon FTE formula, and there's also a crime index that's tied with that. Then the additional 98 million is geared, and that is earmarked for additional SROs, law enforcement, whatever you want to call it, but the law does refer to SRO. Nicole hit it up as far as the low 300, that Level 4 students are no longer required. I don't believe that we have actually had an extra hour outside the regular school day of instruction, but this allows you not to have to do that at this point. And it does put it on a three-year average, so the number of schools actually may wind up reducing down. There's a new section that passed, and I'm going to caution Mr. Baggron to not get too giddy on this one, in that it's called compression funding. St. Lucy benefits to the extent of roughly $900,000, which is a formula that we had once upon a time, and as quickly as it was implemented, it went away. So I'm not sure if this is going to be a lasting formula piece or not. But it allows additional funding, if your total funds per FTE in the prior year were less than the state average, they appropriated some $56 million. And this is actually, this is flexible dollars, which can go directly into the classroom. The VSA is at 4204. For the record, the best and brightest scholarships, there was language that would change that substantially throughout the session, mainly from the Senate. It remains exactly as passed last year in 7069. And the school districts statewide will be receiving the same $50 million for capital outlay and repairs. Again, that's a very small amount for us, but at the same time, we're also going to be saving the roughly 400 and something thousand dollars, I think, from charter school distribution because of the, actually they took on charter schools.
It's not 50 million per district?
No, 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 no. And remember, there are 67 districts, so take that into account.
Hence my caveat, don't spend it all in one place. Next year, we return back to the March schedule. We're going to be doing this where the even years, they meet early, it's an election year, and then the odd years, they'll meet at the actual March conference. So next year, we'll be starting on March 5. There'll be an organization meeting of the legislature on the 20th of November. And then if they hold to the past umpteen years of tradition, we'll have one committee week in December, two in January, three in February. The Monday, December probably will be the week right after MSBA. New leadership coming into play, Jose Oliva out of Miami, Billy Galbano from Brayton, Senate President. The list of issues, this is Vern Crawford's swag. I think it's fairly safe, because these are the same issues we do see. One thing I do want to point out, though, bullet four, the district cost differential study and three. We have had indications, particularly coming from the Senate, that there is a desire to look at the entire funding formula. I'm going to show my age, but I was around when the FBFP first passed. It was a fairly simple program. You had a series of cost factors, you had a district cost differential, you had a paid student allocation, and you had two categoricals, which were transportation and safe schools. From that point, over the umpteen years since then, we've had tweak here, change here, tweak there. It's kind of like the state assessment system. It sort of has gotten to be this unwieldy thing, and people want to try to put in their own effort to help their county or counties. The DCD has always been a controversial issue, and it'll probably be the spark to take a look at whether we want to redo the entire FBFP. You do have a Supreme Court, US Supreme Court decision that still extends, a state does not necessarily have to fund education, but they do that, they will use their state dollars so as to equalize the per pupil expenditure among districts. So the equalization, that, that one guiding principle is still there. But at any rate, we may see a significant review of that. If they did, it'd probably be effective in the 2021 year, but it's going to be on the table for next year. Constitutional revision, they are on break this week, we're safe, but the full body met for three days last week, finished with the, what they call the style and formatting committee, which met on Thursday. They will come back on April 3 to then do edits, putting the proposals into place. May 10 is their absolute drop dead date. They have to have signed, sealed, delivered to the Secretary of State, their final proposals to go on the ballot. And keep in mind, right now, we already have five ballot issues that were either citizen initiatives or passed by the legislature. So the big question that they were wrestling with is how do they package this? Are they going to have a bunch of individual proposals? Or are they going to consolidate them? And I believe in the case of education, I think we'll see an education amendment, which will actually be multiple issues within that. One that's outstanding is the issue of school board term limits. I'm going to say that they actually got that one legal finally. It would be an eight-year limit effective as of the November 18 election. So it does not ding anybody for any prior service. That's what they did for the legislature back in 92. And that one may fall under a separate category called elections as a possible one, and not necessarily tied directly into education. But I sent this out to you all last week. These are the proposals that are being worked on with basically sort of a status of where they are. I did mention in the executive cabinet, because that does have some indirect activities on us, especially establishing the Office of Domestic Security and Counterterrorism. Proposal 43 is the term limits. 44 is putting a restriction on fee or tuition increases to two-thirds for the university system. We did get into the smoke or vapor in the workplace issue. And then 71 is probably, I think, got the most potential impact on the education system. Proposal 8, I believe it's 8, was proposed, that was to repeal the so-called Blaine Amendment. That's the financial assistance to private, pro field schools. You may remember in 2012, the Blaine Amendment was on the ballot, Amendment 8. It received 45% of the vote, which was nowhere near the 60% that it needed. The proposal, the sponsor of that amendment last week offered it and then withdrew it, I think recognizing that it was going to be either too controversial or that it didn't stand still much of a chance for pass. So 71 is in place, and the language is very simple. The focus on that in the discussion was really, would the state be able to establish a separate charter school authorizer, which does exist in 30 some odd states in the country? But the way that it's worded, it says, the school board shall operate, control, supervise all free public schools established by the school district, not within the school district, which gives the legislature leeway to be able to say, you've got school districts, they'll be operating under the uniform system of free public schools, da-da-da-da, but the legislature can still do pretty much as it wishes otherwise, in terms of establishing schools of its own or, or policies for other schools. So it, it doesn't tell the legislature to do that, it would open the door for them to. And I think of any proposal, that one has got probably the, the most potential impact that we're dealing with for us in K-12. College system, again, splits it out from the State Board of Education, makes it a separate board, that existed prior to 1998. And then Proposal 93, which is still there on kind of a shaky basis, but it allows high performing districts to become charter districts. And Mr. Jet may remember, County South up here was one of those pilot counties for about 10 years. It allows a district. It allows a district to waive the same statutes that charter schools are allowed to waive. It doesn't include life safety, does not include FBFP funding per se, first and the so on. But it does give some greater flexibility for how you organize a school, potentially the school day. And again, that would be as established by the legislature, but it's a move a little bit more towards the flexibility for school districts. Going to get into that. And that essentially is the... Yeah, the proposal, the language of proposal thirty-nine, that basically would preclude any of the three of us from going after it earmarked for you. It's, that's simple. And I'm not sure that's going to stay in there. It passed on a seventeen-fifteen vote to put it in, which is hardly sixty percent. I would expect that the drafting committee will pull that out. But they're taking shot at your contract lobbyists who assist the government legislation. Well, he has support by fourteen other people. At any rate, any questions you might have before we transition?
Senator, the only question, would you make sure that we, you send that email form just your presentation so that we can share it with other organizations and great interest in the presentation?
I also have, this is all, not all, it has all of those bills and also any other legislation that have passed education bills that have passed. And that actually goes further into the actual...
Can you have that email through, you can send?
Yes, me and Mike.
Thank you.
With the constitution revision, we'll need to stay in close contact and communication with that in case we have to do any kind of call of action. Just say no to most of it, because it does have, it does affect public schools. You will see a push to privatize public education. This will be a way to do that if it's in the constitution. You know, then we're going to be in some serious challenges with that. So we'll keep the board alerted to that, as well as our communities, and see, and our, see what our next steps would be regarding notifying the public on any kind of a campaign of what exactly this would mean for kids and for school districts and for communities.
And I would suggest too then, you know, I focused here on the ones just for K-12. They've got proposals relative to right to left. They've got proposals on the judiciary system, on the election system, so I mean, there's a lot more than just education. And hopefully, you'll be, and we'll stay up with that.
And it takes a sixty percent, sixty percent.
Twenty-two members, I think.
Percent?
Twenty-two.
Yeah. And then sixty percent. And then sixty percent.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know what you were up against, Dr. Richwell. Having met just over legislators, they had preconceived ideas and really weren't willing to listen to what our ideas are about free education in the public school system. And I think the biggest problem in our community, in all our communities, people not understanding is it's their private taxpayer money, or their public taxpayer money, I guess you could say, going to privatize schools and privatize kind of the capitalism side. And I'm talking to a lot of the community members, people don't understand how this works. And that's the biggest thing, I think, working against us, is the fact that the average parent with children in school do not understand the way this system works. And the more we can educate, you know, the better things will be. But I was disturbed, and I'm sorry that you had to do what you had to do, because in the short time I was in Tallahassee, I felt like anybody that I met with, with the exception of maybe Larry Lee, Representative Larry Lee.
We all love Larry Lee.
They had their preconceived ideas, and there was no way that I could speak just common sense. There is no more common sense in Tallahassee in the legislature than most part. It was very disturbing to me that our community, and I mean, we are going to have to face some hard facts in this next year. And your hard, but your hard work, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think the biggest concern that we have as far as money going to non-public schools is the degree of accountability. And that, is it a good state policy to have a dual or tri-tier system of education where you have state funds going to identify that it's not required to follow state standards, not required to follow the state assessment, and in fact operates on its own? And I'm asking this, not reading rhetorically, but it does set up a multi-tier system of education. And is that a policy that the state wants to do?
We appreciate you coming as well. Many of us are not able to make the county, tri-county meetings that you have. So to come today and give us this thorough review is so important for all of us to be able to get. And also with the, with giving us this, and Catherine asked that we could get it electronically so that we can have it. But we appreciate you coming and breaking down what's going on. As Carol mentioned about Tallahassee, my experience, the last, my last experience there was similar. But what I saw was people are so into parties now that they're not making sense of what we need. And that is what I witnessed on the floor when I was there. It wasn't just our representative, Representative Lee, but there were so many other representatives that made good sense of what they were saying, and still the vote went in the other direction. So it's so much of a party thing now that it's hurting our children. But we appreciate you coming and giving us this review.
Thank you.
I have a woman that's asking if we can take a break? Can we take a couple minutes of break? Five minutes?
Please, please.
Well, I would prefer to do a break, and I don't want to be missing anything. So maybe we'll get a three-minute break.
Three minutes, okay. Don't want to put anybody in in-school suspension. Okay, we will, this will be our last presentation. Some of it will be repetitive, so I will go through it very, very quickly, others I will go through slowly. And this deals with safety and security. All right, Terrence?
Sir. Okay. I have a handout in front of you as well. One of the things that I wanted to start off with, and we shared this at our, at our last meeting, we went into more detail, but over the last six years, this board has invested almost six million dollars in upgrading our school district. And you can see the items that are there, entry systems, fencing alarms, and cameras, and those kinds of things. So the district has been very aggressive even before the Parkman tragedy in trying to keep our children safe. One of the things I wanted to talk about for a moment, and that's why I have Brian up here, is that these are some of the things that we already had in place. We have ten trained certified law enforcement officers that work for Brian at a cost of over a million dollars. That comes from our general fund, that has not come out of our state schools allocation from the state. I'll break that down in just a minute to show you that. Some of the other things that we've done, and you all are aware of this, but this is just a general reminder to the public, and we do our emergency training, our Code Red drills. We will reinstitute those now at our school centers. The practice that we will utilize is that we will notify parents, the individual school, of when that drill will be. The students will be aware, and we'll do that through the end of the year. We'll work with local law enforcement, with Brian Schop as well. We had over eighty-two trainings and drills, so every school had already done this year. One Code Red, and other schools have done two. And as I mentioned before, we've had our district-wide community camera system, fencing, crime prevention, security surveys. So we've been on that. The school messenger, you're aware of, that we notify parents. The Raptor, when folks come in, and we've done training, and updated training with all of our front office staff. There are many folks that are doing that, and that will continue under, with Brian and Terrence being involved in that. We have ID badges for all of our students, our school-based communication systems, radios and those kinds of things. We have updated and bought more. And then we have safety and security group meetings, we've had one just this week. This is what, I wanted Brian just to be able to share with you all briefly what, this is like six-month activity here from July first to December thirty-first, and then also he can share with you a little bit about, in February alone, kind of what his, what his crew does out there. I'm going to, they are a valuable, valuable resource for our school district because they really know the kids, they work there on the buses, they're, they're really everywhere. I have full, a hundred percent confidence in them. When we have our last days of school, we have our breaks before Christmas and winter break, and those things, and I'll send you the notice that it's an all-clear. We've got kids, you know, that are sitting in compounds, the students that are here and there, and his guys don't go home until every child is safely home. And so they do that every day. Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenk. Good morning.
Good morning.
What the two slides are, this is a snapshot of the six-month period from July first, obviously, the beginning of the fiscal year, to the end of the calendar year. The bulk of that activity, obviously, isn't when school starts in August. We have basically four different types of calls, school service calls. For that six-month period, again, primarily from the beginning of school to the end of the calendar year, we answered over twelve hundred school calls. Now, with regard to that, I captured twenty-seven different areas of activity. For instance, in those numbers would be unruly students, disturbances, transports, missing students, bond threats, traffic complaints, irate parents, serving papers, assisting departments. So those are the different specific activities my people fill out a daily every day, and I capture the information on their daily activity. Bus service calls, obviously, especially in early morning hours when the buses are underway to school, and then after school, we have disturbances on buses that we respond to, unruly students, traffic complaints, those type of things. Bus stops calls, we handle a lot that law enforcement doesn't even respond to, because we have issues at bus stops with parents trying to get on a bus or a problem suspicious incident. I handled one about a week ago where there was a vehicle allegedly, they were trying to give kids, can't give the kids. We respond to that. So those are the type of things, problems at bus stops, we will respond to. And other calls are basically to South compound facilities, the Dill District Office, North compound, not school campuses, the other, the annex, the other type of facilities, for a total of eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-four calls. On the right side, close patrols, directed patrols to schools where my personnel actually get out and directed patrols, go in the building, walk around. Close patrols is primarily perimeter, assist the law enforcements. And then this is a snapshot for the month of September, excuse me, it's the month of February, I'm sorry.
Brian, because we're on TV recording this, how do you have right to be able to go to a bus stop and tell people, you know, what's going on? You know, how do they identify you? Is this school security, but what other certifications do you have?
We are also certified by law enforcement officers in various jurisdictions. We, the law enforcement agencies provide us with the training in order to maintain our certifications with the law department, law enforcement. So we always identify ourselves, obviously, as school secure. We don't identify ourselves with any specific agency. Anytime we take any action, we identify ourselves as school board employees, safety and security personnel. So this event is a snapshot of just the month of February's activities. You can see the breakdown in a particular month. And, you know, during that six-month, for the month, we travel over seventy-five-hundred miles. So the six-month period is almost fifty thousand miles. Our guys, our troops are out on the road, they're responding to bus stops, responding to schools, responding to bus calls or calls at other facilities. So we do a lot. One of the things, when I came here, when I retired from the police department, actually, I never really realized what school security did, and that's probably my bad because I really didn't pay much attention in my previous positions. I was really amazed, pleasantly amazed that they do a lot, that we, you know, school secure. We do a lot of different things, a wide variety of things, plus, you know, camera systems. They would get involved in security projects like I had initiated, and I want to thank the sheriff's office doing security surveys of our school sites. We've conducted sixteen of them already, so I think we're above the curve on that, because I started that program a while ago, and Deputy Glenn Hopman, now Deputy Russ Coman, has taken over for that. So we've been doing that all along, and I've been providing those copies to Marty. If there's any issues with fences or signage or what have you, they can go ahead and address.
Any questions, other follow-up questions for Brian before we move on?
Well, I wanted to ask about, last time we met, we talked about having signs at all of the schools, like the N.C. doors, so that parents could...
I have that, I'll hit that in a few minutes. Andrew?
All right. What we want to talk to you now is about post-Parkman. You can see the slide up here, you can see that the numbers on the left in the darker blue show the presence in our schools. Over to the right, you can see the main increase is really with a presence in all seventeen of our elementary schools from the St. Lucy Sheriff's Office. They're the only agency that's doing that post-Parkman. And I'm not going to get in the weeds here, we added a middle school. As you can see, the numbers there, a couple charter schools from PSL and some numbers. So those are the numbers, pre and post. We've got, mentioned that Southport Middle School is one school, the PB is at Performance Base, and then the Moa schools have officers there. The radio, as we mentioned, we talked about the messaging to the parents that we continue to do and update that on what's happening in their school. You may be aware too, that whenever there's an incident on a school campus or there may be a, some kind of a threat, usually, you know, we investigate that thoroughly with our school security, with law enforcement, and then a notice goes out to the parents if it's substantiated or unsubstantiated. And we try to do, Carrie does a good job with that as well, notifying her parents. This was something that was in the works before, this is Crime Stoppers, and we have a Crime Stopper campaign that's going on right now in our high schools, and we're moving that to our middle and our K. H. schools where the students can, we talked about some of the legislation on being anonymous, this ties into it, as well as the fact that there's a financial incentive to that. We've got our campaign that's going on right now. This is an example of one of the posters that we have right here, that you can see that. We're placing several of them out in the school centers. Appreciate Carrie and the team working on that. Dr. Mills, this really refers to what you were talking about here. We have our See Something, Say Something campaigns, we have posters that are going into the schools, as well as the removing hats, sunglasses, those kinds of things, when people are coming to the front doors to gain access into the school centers.
I'm not sure where the slide is, so I'll go ahead.
Okay, I have a question, because the type of sign that I'm talking about is so that parents can help us do what we do to keep our schools safe. And that is something that I noticed that parents do. As I go around the schools, they open the doors for other people. And so they need to know something, I feel, at the entrance doors to remind them, do not open the door. I don't know how we want to phrase it or what.
Yeah, we've talked to, we've talked to, we have another sign that should be county-wide that talks about where your safety at the buzz-in. We've talked to the school staff inside as well regarding the procedures and the protocols that are there, that you pay close attention to, you know, that who's at the door. If you're not sure who's at the door, you don't open the door. I know you're referring to if somebody's coming in, because I've all been at school centers, I've been at school centers as well. You know, when somebody's walking in the door, and another student's going to walk in, and somebody just holds the door for them. So that's something that we've asked the school centers themselves to tighten up on, to look at. Some of our high schools have students that work in the front office, and we don't, not want any students allowing anybody entry, that should only be an adult to do that. So that's a work in progress as well. And that's something that came up loud and clear when we were meeting, when I, when I went on the Met Club with the clerical folks, the frontline staff that are in our front office. So we'll follow up on that and see what that is. The, and then what we've initiated right now is an inter-agency school safety committee, and this is with the Sheriff's Department, PSL, PD, and Fort Pierce PD. And you can see the five objectives. We have a representation, Brian's there, we have a principal representation, Adrian Ocampo from Port Centis High School. Mr. Ocampo has experience as an elementary school principal, as a middle school principal, and a high school principal. And then we recently added Terrence O'Leary to that, and Dr. Prince. So they're on that as well. And then you can see the five objectives, to review the programs, policies, crisis response training, protocols in schools, technology best practices, infrastructure, and then permit process. So they meet each, they meet weekly, and we're involved in that. This is already covered, a little bit of the, so I'm going to go through this very quickly. This is the Office of State Schools, which you're aware of, and you have a hard copy of that. The Security Risk School, she mentioned that already, the ongoing PD development, security risk assessments. The security risk assessments, that's due, every campus has to have a security risk assessment done by August 1st. We have, this is new, this will be, now this is something that didn't hit on, and this is something that will be new for our schools and mandated, that we have a threat assessment team in each school, we have to have those folks identified by September 1st, which will be a counselor, an instructor, administrator, and the law enforcement person on campus, PSRO. And we're waiting for more direction on that from the, from the DOE when they do their reviews. We also, they'll also deal with individual students who are a threat. And then this is an important piece here, procedures for mental health, mental health services that will be identified by the district, because many of the children, that's one of the issues with mental health. And we'll have Bill talk about that in a couple of minutes as well. The other legislation, I think we've already talked about this, so response training, local law enforcement doing, local response training, resource option on campus, implement a student crime watch program, those are all alluded to. One of the things that they have mandated is that we have the designated school safety specialist, he's in the room, sitting right here to my left, and his name's Brian Ruther, and I'm going to be bringing the board, we'll, we'll call him the director, pending board approval, the director of school safety, and that, that meets that, that need, but that's something that Brian's been doing already. And so we may just tweak the job description a little bit and change the title format, and then you can see what, what he does, which is in essence what they've already been doing. So our district has really been at the forefront of this and protecting our students, and it's not like, we, if anybody thinks we've sat around and done nothing until now, that's completely, completely false. And my four top priorities, student safety, you know, is, is 1A next to teaching and learning, that is our, that is our mission here in the school district. And this board has been fantastic in presenting the resources for that. Bill is here, I've asked Bill to kind of condense his presentation, and he can come back and we can kind of get in the weeds if you wanted to on the services that are provided, but I'd like to build a, to come on up, or he's already up here, just to kind of go through this briefly and then how the new legislation will affect us.
I just wanted to go back to what we already do have in place. We do have a very well-established mental health collaborative that's been in place for several years within the district. We coordinate with community mental health agencies to, to provide or refer to children to those agencies for services. Those agencies work with us, in most cases, they give them Medicaid or private service providers, insurance companies, to pay for those dental health evaluations or services that the children receive where they cannot. We try to pick up the cost of that for our SEDnet project, their discretionary dollars is through exceptional education. And that's only when those services cannot be paid for through a third-party entity. These, if we go to the next slide, currently in place, we also have, and I, and I wanted to bring this up because this is mentioned in legislation about addressing substance abuse or problems. We've had a longstanding agreement also where we provide instruction in fifth grade on Too Good For Drugs, in sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade on Too Good For Violence, and at our, some of our middle and high school programs, we do Project Success, and that is drug abuse prevention and intervention. And these services come to us through a collaborative agreement that we already have in place with New Horizons and DATA. And this is in excess of, with New Horizons, along with the, in excess of $500,000 that we were paying for that service, and about $400,000 and more for DATA. And that's a very good, well-run machine that we have currently in place for our school system. There are other services that we have been working on and continue to try to strengthen. We started a trauma and informed care initiative so that we could address trauma. We are working with our Quad County discretionary project of SEDnet to further enhance the way in which we address services and provide services for children identified with emotional disabilities or behavioral disabilities. And we do a lot of professional development and training for teachers that are working with these children. We also have behavioral services that we're providing through staff that we employ within the school system and clearly cannot meet the requirements and the needs of all schools. We do have vendor contracts where we provide that outside of the school system or the agencies from outside. Since 2014, we have also been addressing mental, youth mental health first aid, and that is something that we must be in awareness of coming forth in this new piece of legislation. And recently, at the last, or maybe in March, on March 6th, the board did agree to our pilot program, motivational coaches USA, add 10 counselors in the school system. This mental health services allocation, we'll come back to that for just a moment if we could. The mental health services allocation that is coming forward puts approximately $980,000 to St. Lucie Public Schools to address mental health. And that would be as a way of direct services, it will involve evaluations and follow-up services for children that have been identified in need of mental health. So we're looking forward to that. Also, the DOE, as you heard this morning, is charged with identifying a training for all employees within the school system on mental health awareness. So we are ahead of the game with that somewhat because we've been using an evidence-based model through Samsung. So we're very pleased with what we have in place, looking forward to where we're going. And also, just a reminder that under the humanitarian effort with our department for partland, we did send people from our division down to assist with them in the process of intervention and support.
Thank you, Bill. One other, do you want to hit this one?
Yeah, I was, that's what I was just saying, although I got the $980,000, charter schools will be eligible for a proportionate share of that funding. And this funds, or these funds that are coming to us cannot supplant any other fund source that we currently use to pay for this, and we are encouraged again to build Medicaid or insurance providers for services when appropriate.
Did you make the announcement of the Stop The Bleed change that's going on this Saturday for the, for the weekend?
As part of a collaborative effort with Longwood Regional Medical Center, there is a activity training that occurs this Saturday from 9:00 until 11:00. It's called Stop The Bleed, and it is a national effort. Saturday is Stop The Bleed Day, and this will allow people who attend that to be trained on how to react and respond in an emergency situation by applying tourniquets, using a blood clotting solution that would stop the bleeding. It's, you could say the person's left in five minutes if you're able to, to respond quickly and know exactly what to do.
Thank you.
One item that I, I mentioned from the previous slide, I'm not going to go back to it, but we're required to do active shooter response training, which is kind of like a code red in our schools, as often as other emergency drills. So we do a fire drill every, we do, we do one a month. And so what, our challenge here is to, to do these with a minimal disruption to our school academic day, so we'll be working with the folks involved in that, as well as the component to, try not to fight the students, we do a nice job with that at the elementary level, but since this is going to be something that is mandated, but we do as often as we do the other ones, it will be a disruption to the, to the day. And so we'll figure it out, we'll work through that, as to, I have some ideas and some plans and, and thoughts in place regarding that, as to how we'll be able to do that. This was the funding that came from the state, and we've already seen it, but I just wanted to hit it up one more time. So the first one, the hardening of school buildings by August 1st, we have to have a security risk assessment done. And then we have the allocation, that's a, that's a statewide allocation, I'll talk about the district allocation in a moment. And then we have the Code Harry and Fice Guardian Program, which was mentioned. And by July 1st, districts are supposed to, districts along, along with the sheriffs of counties, of, of what that involvement would be with that. And then the mental health assistance of which Bill just mentioned, that information we do as well on August 1st. When we look at next year's budgets, kind of, of what's coming down, and we need charter schools first, because there was some question regarding that. Charter schools, as this school board is aware, have their own governing boards. So they are allocated dollars from the state, and then that is a decision that they make as to whom they choose to work or contract with. That's really not the responsibility of the school board, that's the responsibility of the charter and their governing board. So next year, there's the allocation to the district, 8.3% or 8.4% of charter schools, that's a figure at Palm Point, since they're what's called an independent district, that's the allocation that Palm Point will receive. This is this year, I want to share this with you briefly, this was this year's budget regarding safe schools, and in the first column, you'll see the total budget, and the second column, you will see the funds that were allocated from, from the state, $752,000, of which 60, almost $63,000 of it went to charters, that left the $689, and then out of the general fund, as I shared with you before for Brian's department, out of the general fund, we supplemented over $1 million. So that's where we, so it's not all state dollars that come in, it, it hits our general fund as well. This board has been very strong in that area to make sure that our students are, are safe and secure, and you can see the information that's there. I did want to hit this one more time, this was the base student allocation, this is what we do to run the day, the, the schools. And the governor had proposed initially $152,000, the state board proposed $100, almost $137, and we got $0.101% increase. When you look at where this money goes, this is our major operational cost. FRS itself, which tends to be $6,000, $700,000 dollar increase this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The utilities, if utilities go, bounce up and down, property insurance, healthcare for our employees, bill for buses, these are just an example of that, that there's inflationary costs that are here, and what the state has allocated to our schools does not really incorporate that. And then you look, this is where we come for money for school raises, raises for our employee, our employee groups. And so it's created, it's going to create a unique challenge for our school district because we're already operating almost at a deficit going into next year. And so we'll work through that process, but I don't want anybody in the public, when we hear that this much money was allocated for education, most of it is earmarked and it's not, it's not flexible, it's not dollars that we can take and make decisions that we think are in the best interest of the district. And so we will get that message out as well, but I wanted to share that to you, and I think that that slide clearly talks about that. And then when we talk about the state, the state overall increased part of it is to prepare for 27,000 new students. We have that as well in our own budget where there's a proposal, a FTE for new students, but you don't know that until the school year actually starts. And so those dollars can't be touched or spent until we know that we have the kids. So that's, that's mainly the main increase for our county, for the school district here, is based upon the FTE allocation of new students that are coming in. I want to now go into, and I'll bring it to a close in just a minute, but this will be the, the big challenge for the, for us in the school district and in the county as well. And these are estimates, and so I, I'm really clear on the estimates because there's other dollars that are, that are not shown here. But if my numbers are correct, you can see the allocation right now, the four apartment, the 20 St. Lucie Sheriff's Officers, and then the PSL, and you can see that that came up to over $2 million. For next year, just for officers in every school facility, this excludes charters because that's an independent org that has their own governing board. So we're just talking about the schools themselves, we would see an additional, maybe $2 million there. This does not take into case what's called shift relief, supervision officers, if somebody's out sick, that's the lingo of the sheriff's department that I'm, I'm not in it. So this is probably a conservative estimate, as well as the equipment, the equipment that goes along with that, or cars and vehicles, but none of that is, none of that is showed here. This is really just for salaries and benefits and an estimate, that number of 21 is a, would be somebody in that school each day, but then there are additional officers in the, in what's called the flex, shiftless, what are they called? Shifting?
Floater, floater.
Floaters, floaters and shiftless. Thank you, thank you with that. What I am going to propose to the board, okay, and this is, okay, this was important too. When we talk about the money, and this was mentioned already before, but the Aaron Fice, Coach Aaron Fice, he was the coach that everybody's aware of that was down there and, and lost his life trying to protect the children. And so there's dollars that are there that goes to the guardian program that the sheriff allowed access to. The governor has made it clear in his letter that, and we've heard it from, from the state senate president, that that, those dollars that are unused, and I think that that's going to be a substantial amount of money, because most of the districts are not going to utilize that, but it's early in the game as people are learning this. But the bottom line would be the dollars that aren't spent would be dollars available statewide to come back to local sheriff's departments, not fund it. The governor's original proposal was to put an officer, an SRO, in every school and also have a, a ratio of 1,000 students or more and additional officers. The governor's initial proposal was a good proposal, I think, for, for schools and safety, but that's not what came out of the state legislature. And so that's, that's, that's going to be the big challenge here, I believe, this is the, I don't even know, I'm trying, sometimes I'm reading body language, I don't know if people want to speak. So that's there. What I'm going to propose to the school board is that we work on an MOU, on an MOU with the sheriff's department, St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office, and this is my rationale behind this. We've had a strong partnership for almost 32 years, since 1986. I was an assistant principal, youngest, a very, very young assistant principal in 1986 at Fort Pierce Central, the first year that this program initiated. And I was, I think it was my first year at AP, and I remember thinking, we don't need, we don't need an officer in our campuses, we've got this, okay? I was so wrong, you know, I learned that within the first month, how wrong it was. And the relationships that are built, not only just for school safety, but the relationships that the officers build with the students have prevented a lot of, a lot of things that would have occurred on campus, the students, from the elementary children up to the high school seniors. See law enforcement in a different light, they're, they're protect us, but they also develop relationships, they come and talk to them, it's, it's a fantastic program. During the recession that hit all of us, the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office was able to keep a strong presence in our schools. After the post-partland tragedy, they've been able to, to supply additional officers in our schools, particularly at our elementary schools and some of the other facilities that haven't had an officer. And while we received support from some of the other agencies regarding increased controls and presence and folks like that, the sheriff's department really had their folks in our schools. The sheriff's department has assured me that they can fully staff all of our schools in one day. There's going to be, it's a good time to be in law enforcement coming out of, of school or training, or police academies, because there's going to be a, a need, as well as a need for mental health counselors, to really fully fund the entire state of Florida. And the sheriff's office shows that he can do that, there's a value in a one-command staff, and there's a consistency in training. So what I would like to do is to bring an MOU back to this school board that would identify the sheriff's office as the lead enforcement agency, and then other agencies that would want to be involved in that would work directly with the sheriff's department, as opposed to going through the school board, designate the, the St. Lucie Sheriff's Office as the lead government agency on this, and then other outside agencies could work through them in the, in this process of, of offering protection in our schools and officers in all of our schools. So I want to propose that to you, get consensus from the board on where you would stand with that, and then bring that back to you, if you agree to do that, bring that back to you at a future date.
What members, do you have any comments?
I'm in agreement with your rationale because of consistency of one command, I think we need everybody, we need every law enforcement agency, but I think we have to have one central command. We love schools, this is a huge undertaking, so I'm in agreement with this process.
Well, and if I may, the original discussion, I thought was where the money was going to go directly to the sheriff anyway, not to the school system. And so when it came down to coming to the school system, you made that decision, that was kind of a, a surprise for some of the conversation that I had heard. We have had a very, very longstanding commitment from our sheriff, we have had opportunities, no matter who was on the county commission, that there's always support for that to happen. So in having a county-wide school system, we should have a county-wide, first of all, he is the chief law enforcement in our county, and he knows how to work with the other agencies to make sure that if they choose to participate and they have some desire to go through the same training, that he knows how to, his team knows how to facilitate that.
Yeah, that was one point that I, that I meant to put up here, is the fact that, as you all are aware more than anyone, government elected officials change. And, and so this is something that's been through, through changes in school board, through changes in school superintendent, through changes in county commissioners, those kinds of things. It has remained an important piece and an important partnership that's there. And the dollars, yeah, it's one point, I think we're looking at, where's Tim at, about a 1.2?
1.2.
1.2, something in, in that figure, that would go directly to the, to the sheriff. You're still going to There's still going to be a funding shortfall, and that's going to be for future conversations with the different county agencies, because as I showed you, we are already at a deficit for next year. But those dollars do go directly to the sheriff's department.
More questions, comments?
Well, it's just good to have the sheriff here today to support us, and honestly, as usual, the sheriff has always been here for us. I would say, listen, Kevin, you just couldn't ask anything more from him and his staff. You know, as soon as Parkland happened, they were in our schools the very next day. We didn't even have to ask. That's just the heart of our sheriff and his agencies, protection of our students who we want, so.
And as is already said, sheriff department is the county. So, we have, we do have a police department, for St. Lucie, we didn't have our police department before, but that's the county agency. So, it makes sense to me that the county agency would be that designated agency that enrich the funding of the school, enrich the operations there. So, I'm good with that also. And again, we want to thank Sheriff Mascara for all of the support that you have given of the schools, your agency, for so many years. You've been right there. And we really thank you for jumping on board very quickly after Parkland incident with the death of Mr. Mascaro. We look forward to it.
If I may say something, I think we should acknowledge that we have great support from both of our cities, and our chiefs are very involved. And Chief Ruther knows some of the discussions over the years that we've had when there was a lack of money and the need for safety and security, and he worked very closely with Mr. Mascaro, and certain things happened. So, I'm very appreciative, not only of the sheriff, but also of the other chiefs, to be able to work together and collaborate.
That's what I was going to say, that when I came to the district, and it's almost been three years now, it seems like yesterday, that the first folks that I met with, was with the chiefs and sheriff's Mascara, and talked about protection of the schools and safety. And we have had good partnerships with our, with Fort Pierce and Port Sandusky. So, that's not saying, there's nothing to write with being said regarding that, but I still think we're valuable, we're the one-command staff, we're the one agency. But they've worked very, very well with us.
Well, just to go on with this whatsoever, just going with this, and to councilwoman Stephanie Morgan's here too, we just appreciate her being here and supporting us. But also, all our reading days, our code reds, Port St. Lucie's also working in conjunction and their municipalities with the sheriff's office and with Chief Ruther to enhance our school security. So, yeah, we don't want to dismiss them by all means.
The one thing that's so great about our county is that we do these agencies, we all work together. And that's the great thing about living in St. Lucie County. And I do, you know, the school district has done a lot to improve our graduation rates, to improve our rate, but we didn't do it alone. It took all of the different agencies, the whole community working together, our after-school programs, education foundation, all of our programs that we have, that our different agencies do support. And I love the fact that we got a ways to go, but we've come a really long way, and we want to continue that progress, because it's making a difference for our children's safety. So, yeah, I agree totally. I think the whole board does that, that all of our agencies have worked very hard to help with our situation and our kids. So, thank you to every...